Welcome to the October 22, 2019 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Please read everything you want to with the pumpkins that are below. That's all I'm gonna say here. We're really blessed tonight to have Dr. Alvin Stewart from the New Beginning Christian Fellowship Church from Leesburg, Virginia, to lead us on opening prayer. And then we have Officer Burton, I believe, leaving us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So those who are willing and able, Officer Barron, those who are willing and able, please stand. Pastor?
Amen. Let us pray. Most wise and almighty God, we thank you, oh God, for this day you've given us, oh God. We thank you, God, for every blessing that we have, oh God, knowing, oh God, that every good and perfect gift comes from you, oh God. We thank you, oh God, for those who assemble here this evening, Lord God, as we come together, Father God, to do your work and your will, oh God. We thank you, God, for the leadership, Father God. We thank you, God, for those who are in attendance this evening, oh God. And we pray that you would preside over this meeting, oh God. We pray, Father God, that you would direct our paths, oh God. And for that, we would give you the honor and the glory. We thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, well, we have a number of presentations tonight. And I'm gonna have Commissioner Burrell join me to join the first one, which is a proclamation and recognition of National American Indian Heritage Month. So Commissioner Burrell? Do you have anybody from the audience representing tonight? Just go forward. Okay, I'd like to read a proclamation from all of you. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States of America, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 2019, 90, designated the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, committee celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month in Cobb County, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, giving them to us this day, the 22nd day of October, 2019, signed by all members of the board. Congratulations to all of you. So who would like to speak for all of you? The guy with the hat.
Thank you, sir. My name is Fulton Arrington. I'm a Special Assistant to the Tribal Chairman of the Georgia Tribe of Eastern Cherokee. I want to thank you for having us here this evening, and thank you for this recognition. You are correct, indigenous peoples have contributed a great deal to making the United States what it is, and I would like to thank we contributed a great deal to some of the ideas of individual freedoms and rights of individuals regardless of their disabilities or special gifts or so forth, and we thank you very much. Would you like to say something on behalf of the Iwaiyagu?
Hi, home, Mabrike. Thank you and welcome. My name is Monica Ponton Arrington. I am a Kaseke of the Iwaiyagu, and we represent all indigenous people across North and South America. We were the ones that Christopher Columbus called Indians first, and we are still here. But yes, sir, George Bush did do what he said he did, and we do celebrate that at Nua Chota every year in November, and we invite people to come out to see Nua Chota and to understand who we are and where we come from.
Hi, my name is Amy Kibble. I am a part of the Kennesaw Mountain DAR Chapter.
I'm Amy White. I'm also a member of the Kennesaw Mountain DAR Chapter, and I'm the Chairman of our American Indian Committee, and so I'm so excited that we're able to do this tonight and that we have representation from the community as well, and I look forward to getting to know both of you much better and partnering with you on furthering cultural awareness, education initiatives, and I encourage all of you, if you are not familiar with the American Indian heritage, their background, do some research because it's just amazing. I'm learning a lot. I know very little, but I'm just very proud and very honored to be a part of this today.
I'm Kate Sklikus. I'm a member of the Kennesaw Mountain Chapter DAR.
Brenda King, member of Kennesaw Mountain DAR.
Marilyn Carol Palmer, member of Fielding Lewis Chapter of Marietta.
Anne Amy, Regent of Fielding Lewis Chapter Marietta.
Margaret Cagle, Fielding Lewis. Thank you.
That's right. This is cute, I like it. Here we go.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today. Appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
It's a pleasure. I'll see you next year in September.
Thanks for coming today.
For Constitution.
Thanks for coming today.
We all appreciate it.
Thanks for coming today.
Thank you. Constitution. 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 Constitution.
Okay, Commissioner Ott has the next presentation.
All right, George and Kathy, come on down. Now, I want you to see when Kathy comes down here about the dedication that they have to their cause. And I think everybody knows when you see pink, like the ties that the Chairman and I have on, we think of Breast Cancer Month, but I bet you have not seen a pink scooter and a pink cast. Ooh, there we go. So George and Kathy Bartlemy are really special people, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what they've done. So I have a certificate here, and the reason I have a certificate and not a proclamation is we don't have pink frames, and we wanted to work really hard to get it in pink. So this is a certificate of achievement presented to George and Kathy Bartlemy. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners commend you for your work through It's the Journey, a local 501(c)(3) charity that raises money for breast health, breast cancer programs in Georgia. Since 2002, the charity has funded 335 grants totaling $14 million to support everything from breast exams, screening, diagnostics, genetic counseling, testing, biopsies, support services, and research, all in Georgia. The Bartlemy's support has evolved into chairing the annual golf tournament for the Cure, now in its fifth year. The golf tournament has raised over 200,000 since 2015. We wish you all the best in your upcoming golf tournament. She's gonna have a hard time. A healthy journey as you continue to fight as a cancer survivor and crusade against cancer this 22nd day of October, 2019.
We are very honored to be getting this. What we do is just out of passion, just as It's the Journey does everything out of passion. And we couldn't do it without all of our sponsors. The East Cobb situation here, the retailers, the people, it's amazing how much they participate and they help. We couldn't have done that 200,000 without them, and we're just beginning. It's great.
Well, this was Kathy's idea. Obviously, she's not playing this year, but it's been a great success, and we usually have about 175 players, which is really pretty incredible, and we have great sponsors, and we have a great team of volunteers that have helped us put this on every year. And so our tournament is Monday, October 28th, and we look forward to having another successful tournament, and thank you again, Bob.
Burrell, I believe you had the last presentation. If you want, sure, absolutely. And Commissioner Ott, he's a veteran?
Yeah. Come on, Commissioner Ott.
Okay, could I have United Military Care folks that are with us tonight? As they're coming up, as you all know, November is Veterans Month, and these ladies are very instrumental in our Cobb community for honoring our veterans and assisting them day to day with all their needs. So we have a proclamation. The first National Veterans Month was recognized nationally in November of 2018, and whereas Veterans Day is nationally observed the 11th day of the 11th month, and whereas Cobb County has a population of over 43,000 veterans of all eras, and whereas the contributions and sacrifice of Georgia veterans and their families dictate more than one day to recognize their service, and whereas recognition of military service is a hallmark of America and central to positive morale for those currently serving, all veterans and their families, and whereas United Military Care invites all Cobb County residents to participate in Give Thanks for Those Who Served Day in an ongoing effort to ensuring all veterans are treated with dignity and never forgotten. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the first Saturday of November as Give Thanks for Those Who Served Day and encourage residents to recognize Georgia veterans and the impact their service has made throughout our nation's history, and to kick off Veterans Month and to find ways to give back to veterans around Georgia throughout the month of November. This is the 22nd day of October, 2019.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Burrell. Thank you to everyone here. We are honored to be here tonight and want to extend the invitation to each of you as Americans and sitting in this audience realize that Veterans Day may be recognized on the 11th and during the month of November, but our veterans serve 365 days a year, as do their families. So I encourage and challenge each of you to remember them in your thoughts and prayers and see what you can do in your community. Come out, join us on November the 2nd, find ways you can help our veterans, and give thanks for those who served. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leeny Rubin. I'm on the Board of Directors for United Military Care, and I've been working on this in this organization now for a long time, and it seems like we never solve all the problems that veterans have, and so we keep on working to do that, and we really appreciate this proclamation today and the help of the Cobb Commissioners, and we would love to have some of you come to our Thanksgiving Day and Veterans Day event on November 2nd. Thanks.
I'm Jackie Jackson, and I'm a proud volunteer of United Military Care, and I count it an honor every day to be able to go in and say thank you for those who served.
I'm Peggy Beaskochea. I serve in honor of my husband and my father, who was in three wars. It is every day a joy for us to do everything we can for veterans. How many veterans in the audience? Awesome. Thank you for your service.
And I'd like to get Commissioner to join us in this picture. I know you all recognize and appreciate the veterans we have here, so I think this should be a board effort here. All right, what a wonderful start to the evening. Okay, and I believe we have a public hearing? Now, if I can get to my rightful place on my script here. We have one public hearing tonight, but transportation, DOT, right?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. We would like to request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Wiggly Road located in Landlots 26, 27, and 47 of the 16th District, Second Section of Cobb County, Georgia, determined that said right-of-way serves no substantial public purposes, and authorize the disposition of same by quitclaim deed to the joining owners, OHC Wiggly LLC.
Okay, so just like to give the ground rules, I think you've all heard before, unlimited number of speakers, each speaker gets three minutes, and if you'd like to speak, we'd like you to come up and let us know who you are and where you live. So with that, I now declare this public hearing open on the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Wiggly Road located in Landlots 26, 27, and 47 of the 16th District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia. I declare this public hearing open on that. Does anyone like to speak to that issue? Would anyone like to speak to that issue? Seeing none, I now declare that the public hearing closed, and with that, I turn this over to Commissioner Burrell.
I did send this out to the surrounding neighborhoods. Heard nothing, no opposition or anything, no calls, and I'm aware that DOT did not either.
No, ma'am, we didn't.
I make a motion that we approve the closure of the portion of Wiggly Road as presented.
I have a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Pass is five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Erica. Okay, now, public comment. Bill, how many do we have?
Chair, we have 10 that have signed up.
Okay, so how do we want to do this? Board? Want to hear them all first? Okay. All right, so before I get, before I start the first comment, I believe I saw in the audience Representative Dave Wilkerson. If you are, did I see you back there? Yes, please, please, please stand, and welcome tonight to our house. It's good to have you. Okay, every public speaker gets five minutes. If you'd please come up here, let us know who you are and where you live, we'd appreciate it. So Dave, Bill, the first speaker?
Yes, Chair, and there's a clock at the podium when you're speaking. Amy Barnes is the first speaker?
First off, I'm Amy Barnes from Marietta. Everybody knows that. I would like to thank the county attorney's office for having the temerity to stand up to Sterogenics. I have people who have revealed to me they are now off oxygen ever since the plant was shut down. So God bless you guys. I thank you so much. You are in the process of saving people's lives.
Amy, you gotta speak to the, you gotta speak to the chair, okay?
Okay, well, your attorneys are doing an amazing thing, so thank you.
I'll let them know that, thank you.
Second off, there was something on Facebook about a retreat. I certainly hope that there was a way for citizens to be able to see what was going on or have more input regarding these retreats, but otherwise, I hope you accomplished a lot. The second, third issue I have, I do realize is applicable to the county administrator for the courts, I think. Magistrate Court still does not have audio amplifiers, so that might not be your jurisdiction, I'm not sure.
I'll speak to the magistrate court about that. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
So I do appreciate what the county attorney has done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to have you, Amy. Thanks for coming tonight.
David Shreckenreth? I'm sorry. Shakara, I'm sorry, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner. My name is, Mr. Chairman, my name is Dave Shreckenreth. I live on Burn Hickory Road in Kennesaw, have lived there since 1984. I am a part of a group called the Friends of Price Park. It's a support group for Leonah Price Park. You have an approval on your docket tonight for the updated master plan for the additional 117 acres that were purchased last year, and we have one objection. We think it's a great plan, but there's one change that we'd like to request be made. We've actually worked closely with the mountain bikers, the Sorba organization, to try to intelligently identify and make a recommendation how to best use the park to accommodate both bikers and hikers, and that was accomplished with one, with one small exception. There are basically four quadrants in the park, I'm sure you know it. The two quadrants on the west side of Altoona Creek have been proposed to be biking trails. There is a second and a third and fourth quadrant on the east side of Altoona Creek that's designated for hiking trails. There's a power line easement that the county owns that goes through the middle, and the change that we're asking for, there's a biker, it's called a pump track, on the east side of the creek that is on the power line easement, and we just see a lot of opportunity for conflict for hikers getting from the southern quadrant to the northern quadrant that are designated for hikers, and we simply would suggest that there's enough room for the biking pump track on the west side where the two biking quadrants are, and think it, we actually agreed with the Sorba folks that if we could keep the hikers and bikers separate, both would be much happier, and so with that small change, I think it's completely acceptable. I know it's acceptable to us, and I think it's acceptable for our friends from Sorba, so we ask that that change be made. Thanks.
Commissioner Garrett, you just let them know what your plan is, because I believe you heard their concerns, and you had a plan of action for that, to split the motion, the agenda item, in two parts, or did you modify that?
Well, actually, when we come up to that agenda item, we will be discussing the emails that we received in regards to that and potentially modifying the plan.
Just want to know, we heard you.
Okay.
And we talked about it yesterday, and we'll talk about it tonight too, okay? Sid Khan?
I'm Sid Khan, and I live at 3417 Maryelle Trail in Powder Springs. I've been a resident of Cobb County for 50 years. I've been a resident of West Cobb for 32 years. I come to speak about McKeeson Village. I know this project is well underway. We're not gonna stop that project, I'm sure of that, but how it got adopted and how it got to this point is absolutely, the residents of I commit to do not know how that happened, okay? I know the Marietta Housing Authority has bought the land, they're doing the work to get it done. The only way I knew about it, I was riding by one day, and it was moving dirt, and I said, what are they doing? And then a little later, a little sign came up that says, Marietta Village. I assumed this was going to be some sort of housing development, and now I've found out it's not. It's a four-story monstrosity, really, that is going to house low-income housing. They say mostly seniors, we don't know if it's a lot of seniors or a little seniors, we don't know. So we don't know what's happening there, but it absolutely does not fit in the neighborhood. We have fought for years to try to preserve somewhat the communities that we've had. Y'all have done a great job of helping us do that, but this one came about with no knowledge of any of the community. Now, I know there may be a law, David Wilkinson can probably speak to that, but I am.
You gotta speak, you gotta speak to the chairman, sir. You can't speak to, you gotta speak to the chairman.
Yeah, but anyway, I'm saying he can, he could speak to that better than I could about the law, but evidently there's a law that says the Marion Housing Authority can go any way it wants to, buy any land it wants to, and develop that any way it wants to, and the citizens of that community have no say-so. But that's the point we're at. We have absolutely had no say-so in this process, and it is really, to me, it is government at its worst. I can't believe that this is happening to our community with absolutely no knowledge on our part of what's going on, and if any of you can speak to that, I would love to hear it. I know Mike, somebody, you had written to one of our people that said, well, it looks like they followed all the proper procedure, but we don't know what the procedure was or how it came about or how it happened, but if it's gonna be an addition to this development, it should be considered very strongly by this commission before it's ever approved.
And we'll talk about that tonight during the discussion on the agenda item.
Thank you.
We will have robust discussion.
Yes, robust discussion. Pax Riddle?
Thank you.
The Commissioners, Pax Riddle, District 4, I just wanted to bring something to you
I just wanted to bring something to your attention that it, it's possible that you're just not aware of. And this relates to, um, a lot of our public boards and commissions. For some strange reason, a, a number of these boards and commissions, uh, are, are sort of closed units. In other words, the citizenry cannot find out or cannot access, uh, the people who serve on those boards and commissions. Uh, they have to go through a staffer, and they're never really sure whether that, that message got through or not. Unlike, for example, I'm, I'm referring like the, the zoning board. Uh, we know who, who those people are, and we can talk to them and access them and email them. But things like park and recreation, um, historic preservation, and possibly others, it's, it's a non-transparent kind of thing. So, I hopefully, you might take a look at that for me if you would. Also, we have some commissions and boards that are, uh, on paper, but they are not effectively doing the, uh, the job that they are chartered to do. Uh, so I ask that you, again, be maybe as careful as you can when you select, uh, citizens to serve on boards and commissions, that you get people who are really dedicated, really want to serve on that board and commission. Uh, one example I'm thinking of, for example, is the Human Relations Commission, which has a heck of a charter and can do a lot of terrific things here in the county. But it's defunct, nothing's happening. Nobody wants to lead it, nobody wants to come to meetings. Um, so, again, if you would take a look at that, that'd be great. And I think there was, though, the last thing I wanted to, um, uh, thank you Chairman Boyce, uh, for your leadership on the homeless issue. Much appreciated that, that, uh, you're, you're taking a leadership role in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pax. Patricia Burns.
My name is Pat Burns. I live at ten Concord Road, Smyrna, Georgia. My concerns today are communicating with board and commission members who are appointed by you, the Board of Commissioners. For me, it's been problematic for over a year when I hoped to engage the Historic Preservation Board member from District Four. Newer appointees are often not familiar with the area of, of their responsibilities. So, I invited the appointee to the Covered Bridge Historic District and also Heritage Park with its ruins. A visit was very brief. The invitation to Heritage Park and its master plan was never explored. Suddenly, and regrettably, out of the blue, I was told ex parte. I took this as a threatening call coming from the former director of Community Development. I took it as a gag order coming from Cobb County. It cut off communicating with another Historic Preservation Board member to learn how he developed a master plan for findings. In talking with other actively concerned residents, I've learned Parks and Recreation Board also seems to have a gag order. On the other hand, the zoning board and election board members have their names along with contact information published. To be on a board or commission is a responsibility toward your commissioner, the residents, and what you represent in your district. For me not being able to communicate with your appointees, the appointees who represent you and your interests is indeed baffling and should be reevali- reevaluated for a more open and transparent government.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burns. Dr. Williams. The one and only, yes, sir.
We've got the largest clan the world has ever known. I'm tracking down all the Williamses.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I want to talk to you about the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. But let me make an observation before I quickly try to get into uh, what I want to say to you. Uh, last board meeting, I once again caught this board performing oversight in a manner that made my spirits drool. The, 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 the oversight had to do with the appointment of a member to the Cobb Development Authority. The board had invested so heavily in that appointment that it was split. Two board members said no, two board members said yes, thereby forcing, uh, uh, the, uh, chairman, who votes when there are ties, to take another two weeks or so to do his own investigation of the candidate before he was prepared to vote. I find that to be commendable. But very frankly, it also places me in an envious position with respect to how, once again, it appeared to be disparate treatment when I look at the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, its appointments, and what appears to be a lack of oversight for that particular board. My opening comments. Now, let me move on to a report. We met last Sa- last Saturday with members of the South Cobb delegation who by legislation have a footprint in the target area for the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. Wonderful meeting. Very encouraging. We left that meeting with a commitment that they, there would be a review of those who, uh, they are responsible for, three members, and there would be a new appointment, one of which would be a community advocate to serve on that board. They also agreed to engage, uh, their members to look at changing the time from early morning, where only the most privileged people can in fact make board meetings, to a time that would be more convenient in the evening. Um, they also agreed to explore meeting with members of the community on a quarterly basis, because we too have some issues about interacting with them and a sense of transparency regarding the work that they are charged to do. The other thing, at this Monday's meeting, there was quick closure by the board on doing a market study and offering an RFP, uh, for a proposal for development sometime in March. My pause on that, I understand that come the end of December, benefits that could come from the state opportunity zone will be squandered, gone, never to appear. Something that could be beneficial as a return back into the community for the developer. My final remarks is this. Uh, Chairman Stoner, as I read the newspaper article, and I'm cautious, because I've been misquoted as well. But as I've read the article, he indicated that there were no proposals had been brought to him. I find that to be less than factual based upon what I came to know at, at the meeting. This board, I think, needs to ask a couple of questions. One, Mr. Chairman, has the board abandoned us in, in, in South Cobb? Two, does the board really care? And those are serious questions, especially as I watch the way in which the board has interacted with the Cobb Development Authority. There's no doubt in my mind, there's clarity that there's some expectations from that group. That you want quality people on that board who take their charge seriously and who in fact will fulfill their mission, which is to move development. Have you abandoned us? Do you care? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Sheila Edwards.
Good evening, Chairman Boyce, members of the Board of Commissioners, and County Manager Hosack. My name is Sheila Edwards, and I reside in the Mabelton community of South Cobb. For several meetings, I, as well as others from the community, have come to you, come to you to ask for your involvement in the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. We requested this action on your part because of what we believe to be a failure by the board to act in accordance with the goals and missions of the authority as it relates to Magnolia Crossing. Because of these failings, we have questioned the continued existence of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority and asked for it to be dismantled. To date, nothing has come of that request. However, the South Cobb Redevelopment Board, Board is on the move. At a meeting earlier this week, it was announced that a company had been selected to do a new marketing study on Magnolia Crossing. Studies are normally done to assess the potential land use for a parcel of land and the economic impact to the community. Since the study was already done only a few years ago, my first question, when, when it was first broached a few meetings ago by South Cobb Redevelopment, Redevelopment Authority, that it was going to be pursuing a new study, was what became of the first study? What were the findings relative to the potential land use and the economic impact to our community? Hearing no response, my next question was, "Why a new study? When we have not done anything with the findings from the last one that is only a few years old?" Being a naturally curious person, my questions continue to flow. What are we looking to obtain from a new study that was not provided in the last? Has the market changed that much in that area that we would need to invest forty thousand dollars into a new study? I don't have the answers, but I still have the questions, including a burning question, what happened to the last study? We all know that when you don't want to move something forward, you, you create study after study and task force after task force, tasked with a singular goal, to study the issue to the point where there's no life or interest left in the issue. I can assure you that regardless of the continued delays on, on development of Magnolia Crossing or the promises of new studies, our concerns regarding our community and Magnolia Crossing will not go away. They are only intensifying. At a recent community meeting to discuss Magnolia Crossing and the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority and other issues impacting our community, a few elected officials who have been missing in action actually wandered into the meeting. These elected folks decided that day that they had a lot to share with us. Among their misguided comments was a statement by one of them to the effect that developers don't want to build in our community because we are viewed as a poor community. He was quickly challenged on that statement, and his retort was that that was what he heard. I was angered and assaulted by that comment, especially coming out of the mouth of someone that should know, should know better. South Cobb is not a poor community. It is not a crime-ridden community, and it's certainly not a drug haven. Like all communities across the country, we have areas with pockets of prob- of problems. But this does not define us or our community. And it should not limit us in our progress, our growth, or our development. Hearing this comment come from him and a similar comment credited, credited to a real estate agent, I can only conclude that there's a concerted effort by some, including elected officials, to define us as poor, crime-ridden, and drug-infested. We are none of these things, and we are tired of these negative accolades being attached to us by mindless members of our society who would rather repeat something negative that they heard rather than to find out for themselves what Cobb, South Cobb is all about. Our community is great, and it's poised for even more greatness. We will not accept anything less. So, in closing, I want you to know that our community supports smart, forward-thinking development of Magnolia Crossing, as well as the other areas of Southwest, South Cobb. What we don't support is a development authority or elected officials that have allowed years to pass with no action on their part to secure the objectives of that organization that were promised to our community, nor the lack of accountability that is owed to the citizens of South Cobb. We continue to urge you Chairman Boyce and the Board of Commissioners to exercise your oversight and any control that you may have to ensure that taxpayers and citizens of our community are receiving the deliverables it should receive from this entity. If it does not deliver, the question remains, why does it exist? And in closing, um, I came to you, um, like, over a year ago when Kmart, which is at the corner of Veterans and Maplewood Parkway, was closing, and I asked that you all look at putting something into that space. And I continue to urge you to do that. I came past that space today, and it is empty. And we could use a lot of things in our community, um, similar to a senior citizen center that was placed on Powder Springs Road in that shopping area.
I'm sorry, Ms. Edwards, your time's up.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Terry Cummings.
Good evening, Chairman Boyce and members of the commission. I'm a retired attorney and law enforcement officer, having worked for the Federal Bureau of Prisons for twenty-five years until my retirement. My sisters and I were blessed to be raised by two loving parents in Tennessee, New Jersey. My father, the late Rudy Collins, was a noted jazz drummer, having played with Dizzy Gillespie, Herbie Mann, Carmen McCray, Cap Callaway, just to name a few. Unfortunately, my father passed away at the early age of fifty-four from an asthma attack. My mother, this beautiful woman that you see here, Dr. Maddie Collins, affectionately known as Bootsy to her family and close friends, transitioned in twenty-seventeen at the age of eighty-eight. Here's my mother that I'm here to talk to you about this evening. My mom was one of fourteen children and raised in Washington, DC. She moved to New York after high school. My mom was a nursing professional pioneer and was one of the first African-Americans to graduate from Bellevue School of Nursing in New York. She began her career in nursing as a visiting nurse in New York, a true-life learner. My mom earned a master's degree from New York University and doctorate degree from Fairleigh Dickinson University. Her thesis was nursing education, therapeutic communication, humor as a means of coping with the deficit. She also wrote a book, Communication in Healthcare, a textbook for nurses and caregivers. As a visiting nurse in New York, patients loved Nurse Maddie's patience, professional skill set, and empathy. Eventually, my mom found her patient in the academic world. More than a nursing professor at the Borough of Manhattan Community College, my mom was known as a gifted and caring mentor. She eventually became head of the pediatric clinical nursing program at the college. Throughout her life, my mother has been there for myself, my sisters, my family, friends, and her community. My mother took care of herself and planned well for her retirement. She exercised, stayed involved in retirement, and loved to read. Eventually, my sisters and I started to notice changes in my mother, and she was eventually unfortunately diagnosed with Alzheimer's. The one thing my mother treasured above all was her love of knowledge and learning. Boy, did my mom try to hide her condition. One time, I found a suitcase with hundreds and hundreds of sticky pads, index cards, and notes. My mother wrote to herself trying to remember things. Eventually, we had to move her out of her home. My mother lived in a to- a total of three senior care facilities until I bought her home after I retired. We all worked, my sisters and I, and we wanted my mom to remain engaged and around people for as long as possible. The first facility didn't last a year because it was independent, and she just couldn't cope. The second facility was beautiful, but my mom started engaging in what is known as sundowning. And if any of you have experienced with Alzheimer's, you know, that's basically when your brain is worn out at night from strug- from just struggling to think and cope during the day. So, my mom became affectionately known as Sticky Fingers because she would go into people's apartments in the facility, and she would claim that the item was hers. And she'd be very polite, but she'd take it and she leaves. So, it even got to the point where I had to shake my mother down like an inmate whenever she would come to visit me and my husband because her pockets would be full of things on her exit. She would always giggle and just say that she thought the items were hers. So, I started to get daily complaints from the facility because the, um, re- other residents were, were complaining, and it be- quickly became obvious that they were not equipped to handle somebody with Alzheimer's. We weren't ready for my mom to be restricted to memory care, which is what they wanted, so we found another plate before she got evicted. so we found another place before she got evicted. She eventually ended up at Brookdale on Cumberland Boulevard. My mom was happy there and she told us that the staff were more patient with her. She wore an ankle bracelet and once caused a ruckus when she learned how to slip out of it while visiting another resident. We recalled, the police arrived, and eventually my mom was found safe and sound. She continued with her collections. She collected trash cans and put notes on them that she had paid for them. She picked up anything staff laid around, nursing bags, radio, glasses, jackets. If staff were looking for something, they just went to Ms. Maddie's apartment and she would gladly let them in and say, you looking for something? Sure, I'll help you find it. My mom was able to stay in her own apartment for a few more years until they found her in the parking lot in someone else's car trying to drive away. We decided the time had come unfortunately for her to go into memory care, but with Brookdale, we were able to do it gradually. When I retired, I moved my mom in with me. My mom died peacefully surrounded by her family. She never fell, she had no marks on her, she remained beautiful. She didn't suffer and unfortunately, all are not so lucky. Many seniors are abused, left in their own urine and feces, or even worse when they are at some of these facilities in Georgia. Why was my mom so lucky? Well, first, my mother was a very friendly person even through her illness and staff loved her. But my sisters and I live here and I even moved from Stockbridge to Cobb County to be closer to my mom. You never knew when the three of us were coming for an unannounced visit at that facility. My aunt stopped by for visits, my cousin went to visit. I took pastries and candies to the staff. We had an employee on our cellphone who would call us if anything was amiss. We even paid one of my sister's friends to take my moms out. We had a total of seven people checking on this woman to make sure that she remains safe and sound in that home.
I'm gonna give you fifteen more seconds.
Okay. But not everybody is lucky enough to have seven people checking up on one person. Not everybody is lucky enough to even have a visit, but all seniors deserve to live their final lives in dignity, safety, and peace. And I'm asking that Cobb County consider and look at, to the extent that you can, why is a senior care facility only fined six hundred and one dollars no matter what the violation? Senior facilities must be held accountable. We need to substantially raise the fines for violations and repeated violators need to be shut down, just like a restaurant.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Mary Latimore.
My name is Mary Latimore and I am homeless. I've been homeless since April twenty-six, nineteen eighteen, and I'm currently still homeless. I am not here to advocate for the homeless. I am here because the Lord sent me here. And I had no idea that there was going to be a meeting here today. So the Lord sent me here for a reason and I think that's to get off of homelessnesslessness. And so I have several items in my pocket. If you guys need to discuss anything with me afterwards, I'm available. But I think you guys know why I'm here. I've been on a journey with the Lord since, well, prior to being homeless, homeless. And so I just wanted to let you know that I'm here. And like I said, if you need to discuss anything with me afterwards, I'm available.
If you'd hang around, I'll make sure that we talk to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Randy Daniels.
Good evening Chairman Boyce and the rest of the Board. I don't have anything prepared, but I do wanna, my name is Randy Daniels first of all and I live in Powder Springs at the enclave of Miller's Pond and I want to echo what my neighbor in Powder Springs just talked about regarding McKeatron Village. We were very surprised about the development and thank you Commissioner Cupid for coming to talk to us last week regarding the second phase of the planned project. So I'm here to request that that phase not move forward. And if it is found that you guys agree that it should move forward, we're asking that after the community is done and the residents begin to move in, that there is some follow-up transportation study to show what the impact will be to the transportation and that there will be a remedy for that, whether it's an expansion of the road, a turn lane, or what have you. But again, we ask that the second phase not move forward and if it does, please take into consideration another transportation study and some remedy for that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming tonight, thank you.
Ms. Daniels, in preparation for today, I did speak with DOT. It's been a while since they have assessed that intersection and so our District Four engineer knows it's on their radar for them to reassess Old Villa Rickon and Mackland. Thank you.
Chair, that's the conclusion. It's all ten speakers.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have a number of admin notes here before we go into the consent agenda. First of all, we have to like to make a motion to add a non-agenda item to number forty-two to the end of the consent agenda, which is to authorize the acceptance of Department of Homeland Security's Secure the Cities Grant Program funds for equipment passed through the City of Atlanta Mayor's Office of Emergency Preparedness to reduce the risk of a successful deployment of a weapon of mass destruction in the metropolitan areas. Have a second. Any discussion? Call a question? Okay, we're pacified to zero and that'll be at, that'll be number forty-two as we scroll down through the consent agenda. As we're doing that, there's a couple of revisions. Consent item number five has been revised to annul the, that's to annul the actions previously approved by the Board of Commissioners of Superior Court Judges and District Attorney. Item number sixteen has been moved to the regular agenda, from consent to regular, and that's the one about the issue on McKeatron Development, just talked about with a number of members, number of the speakers tonight. And we will, we will do that following the Public Services Regular tab. Item number twenty-seven has been revised, that's to approve the name of a future bridge honoring Sonny Walker. And then item number thirty-seven, DOT revised, which is to authorize appropriation transfer of general fund, undesignated contingency funds to DOT's Capital Improvement Projects Fund. So with that, if, Brad, you just go ahead and scroll through the consent agenda items.
All right, I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move, what, is it twenty-seven?
Yes.
Move twenty-seven back to consent. After the discussion we had yesterday, the agenda item was changed to address the concerns that I think pulled it off consent, so I make a motion to put twenty-seven back on consent.
Chairman, for clarification, agenda item sixteen is pulled for regular?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to hear that? Find the right place to hear that. It'd be following the, it would be following the Public Services Regular tab. Okay? Yes. Yes. Okay.
And then I would like to note my opposition to item number seventeen.
Okay. All right, we have all the notations and motions made, so with that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. And authorize the chairman to make, to sign all necessary documents associated with those agenda items. Okay, any discussion? Call a question. Pacified to zero, I appreciate it, no, I do. All right, so let's go on to regular and Erica's gonna save me because that means we're doing DOT stuff.
Yes, sir. So we'll have ten items for consideration this evening and the first item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with DNH Construction Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents for errand road sidewalks.
That's Commissioner Rodd, I believe. Oops.
It's over there. Commissioner Gambrell.
Oh, I apologize. Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Give a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Pacified to zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA thirty-two dash three dash four, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on two parcels on Acworth-DW Street at Jim Owens Marshall Church Roads at Jim Owens and then Lewis Elementary School project.
I believe that's still in West Cobb. Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Pacified to zero.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a right-of-entry agreement with The Home Depot USA, Inc., to allow access to the Home Depot property located at sixteen fifty-five Shallow Road, for roadway improvements on Cherokee Street.
You're on a roll, Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve project number X twenty-two fifty-eight to the twenty-eighteen countywide unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents for drainage system improvements on Stoney Acres Drive.
Apparently, this is your night. Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a local maintenance and improvement grant program application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for operational improvements on Factory Shoals Road, Harmony Leland, and Clay Elementary Schools Phase One.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Omchev Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed two million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-six cents for improvements on Acworth-DW Street at Jim Owens Marshall Church Roads and Lewis Elementary School.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Georgia Bridge and Concrete LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and one dollars and thirty-six cents for rehabilitation of Lower Roswell Road Bridge over Soap Creek.
Commissioner Rodd.
So moved, this, so we stay awake on this side.
Any discussion? Call a question? Pacified to zero.
Thank you, sir. The next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program Grant Application to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources to assist with funding Chattahoochee River Trail in the Mapleton area. Designate Erica Parish Department of Transportation Director as the authorized representative for all matters associated with this grant application and further authorize the chairman or his designee to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA thirty-two dash three dash four and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Ebenezer Road sidewalks.
And Commissioner Burrow breaks through.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
The last item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriation of general fund, fund balance, in the amount of two-point-one million dollars. Authorize the transfer of funds to Capital Project Fund Three Eighty for future transportation installation of traffic signals and for state contract procurement of one factor to include a five-year maintenance plan and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Rodd.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now we have Parks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. We're here tonight to go over the master, the proposed master plans for the first two properties of six that will be coming to you in the near future, of the properties that we purchased with the two thousand and eight Parks Bond Program. Just a little bit about our process as Tom's getting set up over here. We did a great job of getting out in front of the public on these and I've really been pleased with our staff and the commitment they've made to hearing what the public had to say for these properties. We had the first public input meeting where we went out with basically bubble diagrams, listened to everything that everybody had to say about it. We also set up our website to where they could access all of the boards that were put up in front of them at these public input meetings and they could also keep track of when the next meetings were going to be held and all the information concerning their, the park that they're interested in. We went back out for the second public input meeting. We refined what we thought we heard based on the input we got at the second public input meeting and then we brought them before the Recreation Board and allowed the public to once again come up and give their input. We've had a really great transparent process with our website. IAS has helped us tremendously with that and we feel like we've listened a lot to all the different wants and needs. So at this time, we'll start with the first.
If you could, if you could use the screen there because we got it on our screens here so that way the audience can also see what you're doing.
I got it.
Okay, all right, I got it. All right, okay, good. Just want to make sure everybody can see this.
Okay, the first one is, it's known currently as Anderson Road Property. In the purchase agreement, it will be named Schmidt Park in the future. This is on Burnt Hickory Road. Right over here is Barrett Parkway and this is heading back in toward Kennesaw Mountain and on into Marietta. You turn in the park off Anderson Road here, you turn off Burnt Hickory on Anderson Road and then you come to where the old home place used, or is currently. It's a beautiful old house, it's got a lot of character to it. So you actually come into the parking lot, there is a service gate here which will allow staff vehicles as well as caterers if there's an event in the house where a caterer is needed, but you've got the parking lot here for the park visitors. Getting down to the pond, there is a switch back here that provides ADA accessibility, but there's also a set of steps that cross over that three times coming down. So if you want to do the steps, you can, but for ADA accessibility, as you can see the contour lines, it's a nice little drop down to the pond. That paved ADA access trail goes all the way around the pond. There'll be a couple of fishing docks proposed, picnic tables in this area, a earthscape playground back in here along with a pavilion with a restroom for people walking the trail here. You go down in elevation here, back down toward the creek that goes through the property. There is a outdoor classroom type amphitheater right here that where you Uh, there is a, uh, outdoor classroom type amphitheater right here that where you can lead, uh, presentations on plant life or either, uh, small animals. A maintenance building here where we'll be able to keep our, our mower. Uh, the, the dotted trails are actually, uh, natural trails. It'll be dirt probably or slate. Uh, there's an overlook here. There's another overlook over here as it, as it goes around, goes up this elevation, and you can see back over the property. Uh, the, the ADA accessible trail does another loop here, uh, which can get, uh, accessibility down into the lower, uh, portion of the park. Uh, and it comes on around to a group pavilion here with a restroom and then back out. You've got two large multi-use open fields. And along this trail, uh, we would propose putting some of the exercise stations, uh, ru- run for a while, do some push-ups, run for a while, do some sit-ups, and that type thing. Couple of pedestrian bridges, uh, crossing the creek. Actually, three of them. One, two, three there. But you will notice as we bring all of these forward, we, we've heard loud and clear that the residents are looking for green space. They're looking for, uh, passive recreation use and not your, your ball fields and things that we built back in the seventies. So that's what we've got here. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Good?
Okay, we're good.
Okay.
Yes, uh, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to Commissioner Gambrell.
Okay, yes, and Jimmy, I would like to thank you and your staff for all the work you did with the community. I was in attendance at those meetings, and we did have a lot of positive feedback, and I will say this park does reflect what the citizens wanted, so thank you for that. Um, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the, um, Anderson Road Property Schmidt Park.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, I just wanna make a comment. I mean, and it's the same one I make every single time we vote on a master plan that, um, and Jimmy, you can nod your head, but this is not approval to spend any money.
True.
This is just approval of the plan, and my vote in approval of the plan is not any indication of my support of spending any money on new parks.
Yes, sir.
Until we can afford the ones we have.
Absolutely. Okay. Any discussion? Or call a question? Passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go on to, uh, the one we pull off of, uh, consent. Oh, did we? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay.
I was, I was, my tie was on too tight again, so.
Okay, this is the second one. Uh, this is, uh, the Price Park North. Uh, this is, uh, Stylesborough Road. Down here to the west is Mars Hill. Uh, to the east is Acworth due West. Uh, this is the existing Leon Hall Price Park here, uh, on the south side of Stylesborough. And we purchased this one hundred and seventeen acres with the two thousand eight Parks Bond Program. Currently, on the south side is, is, is all walking, uh, trails. A couple of the two thousand sixteen splash projects. We actually come in here and did a restroom pavilion as well as we fixed, uh, a, a nice parking lot there. But with the, with the new property, we're looking to keep the parking in the same area. Realizing that there might come a time where folks would want to cross over. We'd have some type of a hawk crossing or some type of a, of a way to get folks across Stylesborough Road, realizing that traffic on Stylesborough sometimes, uh, gets, gets kinda speedy. Also, some traffic calming signage here as well as back up this way, uh, letting folks know that they're entering a, uh, a park or a congested area. From the parking lot, you've got an open field, a play area. Uh, you have a, a pavilion and a restroom, and once again, a natural playscape area. One of the things we heard loud and clear is we don't want the, the bright yellows and greens and purples. This is natural playscape. This, this is things that look like rocks, look like trees, that type of play apparatus. And here's the, the four quadrants which Mr. Schickerath mentioned earlier tonight. You've got kinda like the, the northwest, the southwest, the southeast, and the, and the, and the northeast. Arboretum Trail. You see some different colored, uh, trees in this area. There are several native species, uh, of, of plant life in this area, which is gonna lend itself well to creating this as a, as a plant rescue area where we can bring in some native plant species from the, from the Georgia area. I'm sure the master gardeners would, would love to, to help us out in this area. You've got a natural amphitheater here for once again, leading, uh, classes or either group discussions with, with kids or adults there. And walking trails all in this area. Uh, it, it comes on up. You've got more walking trails. This is all on the east side of Alatuna Creek. More walking trails. Uh, if you look at the west side of Alatuna, uh, there's a trail that comes down, so you, to keep bikers and walkers separated. If they come into this parking lot, there's a trail here that leads, uh, bikers to a, a bridge, and then you've got all bike trails on the west side of, uh, Alatuna Creek. You'll notice there is a, uh, in the true trail master plan, uh, someday there may be a, a, uh, a multi-use trail from Alatuna Creek Park, south down along Alatuna Creek. It's factored in here, uh, going on up to Alatuna Creek and then heading back down to Kemp there. This is the area, uh, on the west side that Ms. Schickerath is talking about as far as a pump track. It's a, it's small moguls that young children can get on with their smaller bikes a- and do a lot of training. You've got that area here and pedestrian, uh, bridge here, and then as well as the bridge there. So, any questions?
Is this from the members of the board?
I have some questions for you, Jimmy. Um, I know you and I have both received emails regarding the pump track that would be on the east side of this plan. We could remove that and still fit in the needs of the bikers, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. This one, while it, while it looks much smaller than here, this is still six hundred feet-ish. It's still two, the length of two football fields. That's plenty of room, uh, to come into this area and do all types of different pump tracks.
Okay, and then my next question is on the bridge. That is in between the two pump tracks. Would we still need to do that bridge if we remove the pump track from the east side? Or is that something we need to look at more carefully?
You threw me a curveball there.
I'm sorry. I just thought of it as I was sitting here.
I'll, probably not. Uh, if our, if our mission is to, you know, keep walkers this side, they would still be able to, to have some interaction here. But I definitely think we can take this out and have plenty of room here to do all types of pump tracks on the left side.
Okay, so I didn't know if, if we remove the pump track on the east side, do we need to keep the bridge?
Well, there, there could be some days, uh, where you've got a lot of walkers who wanna get over onto that side.
And it would be so at your own risk.
It would be at your own risk. It would be. Uh, but that would give them access to be able to get across.
Okay.
You might wanna do it in case you have an emergency situation.
That's true.
So, 'cause it's, it looks like it's a pretty good-sized park. You would have a way to restrict access to the bridge, but, uh, if you didn't have that bridge, it'd be no other way for them to get across except going up on the top north or the south part of the, of the whole park. That's my only thought.
And that would be big enough for a gator or some type of a rescue vehicle to get across.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Burl?
If you take, is this the west side you're talking about taken out?
The east side, so the one to the right.
I mean, the east side. What, what are you gonna put there?
Nothing. It would just stay open.
Just green space?
Yes, ma'am.
Would there still be trails in there?
Well, there's a trail going up this side, and then there's a trail coming down this side. It would just be open green space. We could always, you know, do a couple of connections across in the future, uh, but it would just stay open green space.
And Commissioner Burl, the pump track is actually, uh, located in the easement?
Yes, ma'am.
For the power lines through there?
Okay.
Correct.
This kinda goldish line, is that not a trail?
Yeah, it's a trail.
Oh, that's the track. Okay, I got you.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, cheers.
Any other questions? Okay, so I would like to make my motion to approve the, um, Leon Hall Price Park North. As shown with removing the pump track on the east side of the property.
Okay. Give us a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes, need to vote. Five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you, Jimmy.
All right. Now I take, uh, Mr. Hughes. Maybe you have the floor with the guardian, the resolution proving the issuance of the development authority bond.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. The purpose of this agenda item is to request that you adopt a resolution to approve the issuance of the Development Authority of Cobb County, uh, revenue bonds for the purpose of assisting McKeaton Two, or Senior Two LP, which is a Georgia Limited Partnership. By way of background, the Development Authority of Cobb County is considering its tax-exempt revenue bonds, uh, to finance the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of approximately a hundred and sixty-two unit rental housing community for seniors that would be located at twenty-two thirty-six Old Villa, Old Villa Rica Road at Powder Springs in Cobb County. Uh, by way, additionally, section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code nineteen eighty-six as amended provides that the government unit having jurisdiction over this area, uh, in which the facilities be financed, uh, with these proceeds, uh, is located, has to approve the issuance of these bonds. Consistent with the board's policy that was about, adopted this past November, um, not, or proponents notified property owners within a thousand feet of the subject property and conducted a per- public informational meeting. An additional, at the end of the, this past Octo- or, I'm sorry, August, uh, a second meeting was requested by this board, and that meeting was conducted on October eighth. With that background, staff is requesting that you approve this resolution.
Thank you, Michael. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank the many people who have contacted me with respect to this agenda item. I've heard from several residents, met with some, um, had personal conversations, and emails and calls. And, um, appreciate the number of you that attended our meeting on October eighth. I wanna thank also the Searls Foundation and Marietta Housing Authority and Economic Development for being present at that meeting. Tonight is certainly a, a difficult conversation to have about the policy interest of preserving, uh, or, um, increasing affordable housing, particularly for our vulnerable population of seniors, and balancing that with community interests and concerns and general policy that we apply when we are, um, changing land uses within the county. As was stated, um, this agenda item had come forward before us in August. It has been delayed due to the overwhelming concern that I have received from residents. This, um, agenda item pertains to a second phase of a development which is already underway. There's Phase One, which is occurring, which is a hundred and forty-four units of affordable senior housing off of Old Villa Rica Road. Prior to that application coming forward, I received, um, communication from Marietta Housing Authority about the project, which they did not have to ask for, um, for, um, my deliberation, uh, but out of my concerns, I asked for them to meet with the community and, um, get their tenor of the project. And that's typically not done when we have projects of this type move forward, and it, and it's not a requirement. In communicating with the Housing Authority, received that there was no opposition to this project. We moved forward with Phase One. The board supported it. As that project became underway and ground was cleared, and I started to receive calls and emails, it became very clear that there indeed was opposition to this project. And I became very concerned about what I perceived to be, um, the community's feedback for that phase and us expanding with the second phase. So I asked for this, um, board to hold this agenda item so that I could have a meeting where I can make sure that I'm present with the Marietta Housing Authority and residents of the community. Overwhelmingly, there was opposition from residents who attended. Although there are residents who attended who were in support and, um, were interested in the project, there's one resident who's probably most proximate to the site, who, um, was in support, but certainly an overwhelming number of residents had concern. And because that concern was not registered in any of the materials that we received regarding public comment, I think this board ha- has had some robust discussion about how we change this process so that we can make sure that communities are better engaged, informed, and aware of what's going on in their community prior than what we have been in the past. This is not the first time that we have approved bonds for, for such projects. But just because we've approved them in the past doesn't mean that it should be considered, um, a matter of formality to approve it every time they come forward. I think, um, all that has transpired, I think should inform the board that we need to take each and every one of these projects with individual consideration for the impact that it's going to have, and weighing that with the public interest of, of, um, the project. There was concern or communication that the only requirement or obligation or even step that this board should be taking is to just, again, assess the technical formality of that, of this application. And I must say that I disagree with that today. And I will be taking into consideration not only factors that I think should be considered when we weigh all changes of land use, but I think it's important that we also consider the language of our resolution. Our resolution has eight whereas clauses. The eighth one says that the board finds and determines that it is in the public interest of the Cobb County to grant the approval of this project. I believe this clause here opens up consideration for the public interest, which means that this should not be weighed just on a technical matter, but we need to weigh what, um, the entire, um, public interest is. And certainly the most prevailing public interest with this application, which has brought the Marietta Housing Authority to partner with the Sales Foundation, is affordable housing for seniors. In Cobb County, there certainly is a dearth of affordable housing for our, our senior population. I know this from talking to MHA staff because I personally had dealt with a homeless resident who was a senior, who I had brought here after learning of them being homeless in another state. And, um, I, I take this application very much to heart in weighing this because, yes, it's a matter of public interest, but it is one that has struck home to me personally. And though we have a lot of work. In research, I uncovered there was an article written on May third, twenty nineteen by the Marietta Daily Journal around issues surrounding affordable housing that was discussed here in Cobb County. And there was overwhelming opinion that affordable housing is a challenge here with the median home price in Cobb being two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And with new, uh, jobs that are being created, at least sixty percent of new jobs in metro Atlanta being created are paying about forty thousand dollars a year. These circumstances certainly become exacerbated when you're a senior on limited income. This, I was very touched, I must say, when I had the ability to go to a senior facility that we did open in Mapleton, and I talked with residents who were grateful that they had the opportunity to live in a senior affordable housing development here. Now, there's some consideration that the seniors that move into these projects are perhaps not the desirable. perhaps not the desirable seniors that we want in our community. There has been language of that tenor. But from personal conversations that I had with four of the seniors, I spoke with someone who was an accomplished teacher and professor, who was from Africa and had traveled the world. I talked to a former basketball coach of a university from my home state of Michigan. I spoke to a veteran and his wife. And I also met with a woman who wants to continue working as an esthetician here in Cobb County. Some of these persons certainly are at an age where they may not work. Some of them still desire to, but all of them knew that they needed a place that was more affordable and more accommodating to them. And their stories and their appreciation for having an affordable option here in Cobb touched me. It also touched me to learn of the thousands of people that signed up for these a hundred and four unit location that was turned away. I think as a board, we agree senior housing is a challenge. But there are also other public interests that must be weighed here. Looking for my notes. Something that we always consider when we have new development is whether or not the land use is a fit. And I've shared that the Marietta Housing Authority does, is not obligated to go through our zoning process. However, I do not think that that means that we should not consider what we think is good land use policy when we have changes in land use in our community. And there are five factors that are considered for zoning and land use. And I'm going to run through those. One is whether the zoning proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. The second one is whether the proposal will adversely affect the existing use and usability of adjacent property or nearby property. Whether the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned, whether the proposal will result in a use which could cause an excessive or burdensome use on streets, transportation, utility schools, whether the proposal is in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use plan, or whether there are existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property, which gives supporting grounds for either disapproval or approval of the proposal. In a way, what we diligently assess whenever we have a new land use proposal, I have found that this would not, this development would not pass muster when it comes by our zoning process. And the desire for affordable housing, I think, needs to be weighed with what we would look at for any development, regardless if it's affordable or not affordable. Because I need to take into account the policy interest for affordability, but also for those that live in the community and their balance of interest for their property. The first one, whether the zoning proposal will permit a use that's suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. If this property is developed both Phase One and Phase Two, there will be a total of three hundred and six units on fourteen acres of property. That gives us a density of twenty-one units per acre. The surrounding land use of this property is low-density residential at two units per acre. If you were to look at our policies for proper land use planning, this is, this, not just on its face, but looking at our policy, is a use that is far more intense than any surrounding development. When we have changes in land use type, we often consider a step down zoning between intensity. However, there is no step down between low-density and high-density residential here, which would be medium-density residential. And so we've asked for residents to, well, I would say we haven't asked them because they were not asked in this process. But there's an expectation that they find it reasonable or have to live with such a disparate increase in units than what they have expected, not only by its current zoning, but by the future land use map of that area, which is to be low-density residential. And I do believe that their concerns about that are valid. Again, when we're applying our zoning and land use policy, there's a question of whether the proposal will adversely affect existing use and usability of adjacent property and nearby property. I think that's become some of the argument that we've had. Will it affect transportation or traffic in the area? Typically, when we have senior development, from talking to DOT, we used to consider their impact to be about a third of single-family development. Those numbers have changed to now be about half of what is expected in a senior development, because as was shared in the community meeting, there's, and as I've shared in my comments, some seniors do work. But typically, the traffic patterns are less. There is a question of whether or not there would be an increase in crime in multifamily. And I have had no communication or indication that at least locally, there would be an increase in crime here in Cobb County. But I tried to be as diligent as possible and research everything I could about crime. And there are some studies that state there is not a disparate impact, but I have found one study that stated that there could be disparate impact for senior and assisted living apartments could increase the vulnerability of properties within a thousand feet. There has been a quest, oh, excuse me. There's a question about change or impact in property values. The overwhelming research that I found show that that there's an emerging consensus amongst researchers that subsidized housing of various types do not have negative effects and sometimes has positive effects on property values in high-value neighborhoods. However, it's also noted that affordable housing can have a negative effect on property values when they are highly concentrated in vulnerable neighborhoods that already have high poverty rates and low home values. MHA and the Beverly Searls Foundation also referred to a study which showed that there was no evidence indicating that there would be a diminution of property values. But one thing that I can say is while there may not be a diminution of property values, that there's consensus on, there's a concern about how area median income impacts retail development in a community because that is driven by area median income. And this is an area where another commissioner can address more, where there's a desire for more retail. And so I just think it's very important that we balance the interest of how we support and create a more complete community to have retail while balancing the interest of building more affordable housing. There are other factors that we consider in land use and zoning, some of which are not conclusive, but some of this which have valuable or valid concern, some of which will be assessed and was not assessed as part of this application, is whether or not there will be excessive burden on transportation facilities. And I spoke with DOT, and that's, and a study for this area does need to be updated. So there were some who are requesting a traffic assessment, traffic light, that may come in the future. There's a question of whether or not this proposal is in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use plan. It is not in conformity with the, with the land use plan. Are there existing or changing conditions which should give rise to consideration of this application for this area? There isn't. Now, there again has been discussion of why, why consider land use and zoning when MHA does not need to have it. And I think what it does is it allows us to, again, balance the opinions of everyone on all sides in a way that most local governing bodies and this governing body has found to be one of the most fear processes that we can have as we bring in new development. And so I appreciate MHA's willingness to have additional meetings with the community, but there's also more protection that's needed. And one of the protections has to deal with notice. Typically, we, notice is provided in the legal organ of a community, of a locality, which would be the Marietta Daily Journal. By at least seven days prior to there being a public meeting, and MHA actually published it fourteen days outside of that process. They've also sent letters at our request, at my personal request, out of my concern for our processes to residents within a thousand feet. But we've learned with the larger, with the larger lot sizes in this area, a thousand feet did not, did not reach as many residents as certainly was indicated by the turnout at the public meeting. So when I had the public meeting, we put out signs. We typically put out signs for zoning, but we did not do that for Phase One, so people did not know about it. What I would like to request, and I think economic development has already taken note of, is to ensure that whenever we have another development that requires our approval through a bond process, that the community has noticed via sign, and similarly to zoning and land use, so that there's more robust notice of the community and hopefully more robust engagement of that community. Again, if I were to lean on land use and zoning, another way that I would change the process, or at least maybe enhance the process, is when I have zoning cases, I always ask the applicant to talk to the community because all of us know when you don't talk to the community first, and you put that application in, you put that community on the defensive with any new development. And so again, I don't think it's unreasonable for this community to have been on the defensive, but they did not have the benefit of even being engaged in, in robust conversation afterwards. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration with the policy interest. Another policy interest that I think should be considered beyond affordability for, of housing for seniors, land use fit, adequacy of notice, is just the general public tenor. And as I stated, there were some in favor of this development, and certainly the county needs senior housing by the thousands of seniors who are asking for it in the hundreds of, in the hundreds of properties that are being developed. But this question tonight, or this item tonight, is not whether or not the county should develop senior housing. It's should this project be placed here in the way that it is being proposed? And the overwhelming majority of the fifty people that attended our public meeting and of the emails I received have provided, no, it should not. And I do admit there were some there who were lukewarm, who were in the middle that weren't necessarily in favor of it, but who understood the public interest. And again, you could see the moderation of the resident who spoke tonight that said, if this were to move forward, can you please consider this? I think that community is trying to meet this project as close to the middle as they can muster, considering the circumstances. Which gets to my point about coming to the middle. In the article that was stated about affordable housing, there was a quote of our chairman. And it says this. "In response, Boyce says that when developers and attorneys engage with the neighbors and make the effort to explain the potential benefits of a new project, typically an agreement can be reached. If you engage the neighbors, and it takes persistence, but I've seen this, if you engage the neighbors in a manner that reflects that you want them as part of the conversation, that this works to their benefit, more times than not, you will find a middle-of-the-road solution." And I agree, when they are engaged, it's easier to find a middle-of-the-road solution. And I think with more engagement of communities in this process, that is possible that we can work together. I don't think this needs to be an either-or conversation. I don't think this should be an adversarial conversation. Affordable housing is a topic to stay here in Cobb County, and I think it will continue to grow. But I think we need, from this process, I see we need to do a better job of how we're addressing this. And when we have actual projects, there needs to be more robust conversation about it. But I don't, I believe, though, that there still is a middle ground here because Phase One of this project has already been developed. There will be additional senior development in this community to the tune of a hundred and four units in Phase One. I think that's the middle ground here. Those are already being constructed. They will add to the, to the affordable housing footprint for seniors. And I think, again, with the conversation that this board has had, I don't think there's limited appetite to put in senior affordable housing in Cobb. But I think there's a lot of concern that's been expressed by commissioners about how the, how the intensity of a three hundred and six unit development could take place here in the manner of which it did. And I think that we will all go back to the drawing table and hopefully have a much better process for this. But I think that that middle ground has, has, has been reached and will be reached once that, that project has been constructed. So with that, yeah, my motion would be to deny this agenda item and for us to make modifications to our process for the drawn project moving forward.
Take it off the board. Okay, so we have a, we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second from Commissioner Ott, and I'll just go down the table here. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Chairman. One of my reasons for opposition is reading the two reports between Phase One and Phase Two, there is a big discrepancy between the two reports. Right down to Phase One is being touted as a senior development, but if you look at the way they calculated the parking, it's actually for family use. This will be a huge burden and impact on our school system if it is not for seniors and it is for family use. So then, so therefore, my question is, is it truly senior or is it family? Because according to this report, it's, parking is being calculated at a family ratio instead of a senior ratio. Also, I found it interesting that in, in the Phase One, the utilities are supposed to be paid by the individual homeowners, and Phase Two, it's supposed to be part of their rent. That's only just a few, just brushing the very surface. Also, in this report for Phase Two, I found it very interesting, the numbers that they presented, because again, the economic impact between these two reports is great. And then if you look at the median income, it lowers median income in my area, which this report includes because it goes to Stilesboro Road, by up to thirty-five thousand dollars. That is a huge impact and potentially why we're having a hard time keeping shops going into the avenues. So again, while the Marietta Housing Authority has the right to locate here, I think they need to be careful in how they impact our community on other bases.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, questions first. Has the density issue that seems to be a concern of the number of units been discussed with the developer to see if something could be reached when you're talking about middle-of-the-road, kind of negotiating with what's proposed? Even though they're exempt from zoning, you know, treat it like a zoning as far as trying to work something out, if that's something that could be, if that's what's standing in the way or if that's what's... My, my concern is, my concern is that Phase One has been approved and Phase Two, and this is the bond issue for Phase Two. However, I know that the requirements are different as far as, as it relates to our zoning requirements. And I agree that that process should be changed so that the public is made more aware. But it's kind of late to be doing this. However, you know, I'm, I understand, because I've been getting the emails as well, and I know that, you know, what the majority of the folks are, are concerned about, and I know you as the district commissioner, you know,
Yes.
Have made a motion to deny, so I'm, I'm not fighting you on that.
Sure.
I'm supportive of your motion. I just trying to understand if there's something that could have been done or should have been done.
I appreciate you asking that question, and I'd like to answer that. Even with fourteen acres for a development of about a hundred and forty-four units that's already under construction, you're looking at ten units per acre in an area that has two units per acre. If the second phase were to move forward, you're looking at twenty-one units per acre. So I think you asked, did you talk to the developer about that? Is there some middle ground or way to negotiate? I think that negotiation is limiting it just to Phase One, which is our
I think that negotiation is limiting it just to phase one, which is already under construction. One thing I didn't share in my comments, we just opened up a beautiful facility that the same developer developed in Mableton. It is in an area that's basically a neck, and it has the higher-density residential. It only has about a hundred and four, or a hundred and five units. So even just comparing both communities, this is a lot more intense for an area that has, again, lowered, um, um, lower-density development. So I cannot ask that community, I, I can't ask this area to moderate that density anymore than what's already going to be moderated by the, the current development of phase one.
Have they looked at Magnolia Crossing?
There has been some, you know, that, that, that came up, and I'm sure you'll have a resident, you know, you may have a resident...
I mean, there were, there are apartments around there.
I will share, I will share this, there, there has been consideration, a, and there has been desire from some in the past to put senior development there. I don't think that's been ruled out as an option. But I also do know, there is an applicant, or there is a, um, a future applicant for senior housing in District Four, that will be at my plug for my monthly community zoning meeting, they will be there tomorrow evening to talk about another development, which may be more palatable. And I don't want to give the impression that of putting in affordable housing should, should only be moved forward when the public tenor desires it. I mean, this is a tough issue, which is why I, I think it's very hard to develop, and sometimes there is a prevailing interest to move it when it may not be publicly supported. But I think there are areas that may embrace it, and I think, um, I'll, I'll be looking forward to see what kind of conversation we have about where this other development is. But I can also share with the one in Mableton, it was, it was embraced by the residents who were there.
Commissioner Gamble?
Commissioner Burrow, also, another thing to factor into this location, is there is no public transportation to this location. There are also no sidewalks in this area to help residents reach the shopping center and the, and the drugstore that was referenced in the report. Also in the report, it says there's only going to be nine employees of the facility, and the other support for the facility will be provided by Cobb County. Again, I don't see how the Marietta Housing Authority should be obligating Cobb County for our services.
Okay.
And they, Marietta Housing has developments with Walton and others, um, area, other developers in my district, Forty-One and White Circle.
We'll, we'll get to that, I have a chart.
So, um, I'm just saying...
Commissioner Ott?
You're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although I, I second in this, I, I do have some concerns, as I've watched this progress over the last month, that the goalposts are being moved. Okay? Big time. And, and I don't necessarily disagree with the concerns that Commissioner Cupid and Commissioner Gamble have mentioned, but the fact of the matter is, there's a lot of work that's been done by the Development Authority and the Marietta Housing Authority, and the goalposts have been moved every single time they come in front of us. Which I think is a mistake. I, I don't disagree that the, possibly the policies and the direction that the board gives to the Marietta Housing Authority, the Development Authority, and even the Cobb Housing Authority, needs to be updated and changed. But I think it makes it very difficult, and it's a lot of extra work for Michael and the, and the folks from Marietta Housing Authority, when you continue to move the goalposts down, continue down the field. So I, I have a big problem with that. But I also, and to the Marietta Housing Authority, I will say that yesterday's meeting, my understanding of what our role was changed dramatically in the discussion with you all, and it went way in the opposite direction of what we had been led to believe in the past. And, you know, I went back and looked and listened to what we had talked about in the past, and, you know, there, what, this board has been given the impression, and I've been up here a long time, that this was almost not necessarily a rubber stamp, but it was a formality. And the chairman knows, I asked him a question, I'm not going to bring up what I asked you. But the fact of the matter is, there is nothing that comes in front of this board that we vote on, that we have to vote yes. And there are some big votes that this board takes, that, as the chairman knows, and they'll get a grin on this one, that the consequences would be shocking to the community if this board were to vote no. And we were given the impression that this was one of those ones that just kind of passes through this board. Well, it doesn't, because the last whereas, as I pointed out yesterday at the meeting, says that it is in the interest of Cobb County. And I think it's very clear that it's not. Because of all the conditions and things that we would normally consider in a zoning hearing. This is not a zoning hearing. And that is where the goalposts have been moved, and I do not think it's in the interest of the county, but I have serious concerns about moving the goalposts the way they have been moved this last month.
Could you put that chart up? All right, I probably got to go up there.
I'm Mike Boyce, I live in Cobb County. All right, just, I'd just like to go through some steps here, some information here for all of us. Because I, I went down and visited this site on Friday. This is the sighting question right here, and this is the site right now, that's the current hundred and forty-four units are being built on. The proposal is to build the additional units in the back here. Okay? And I walked back there, and between here and all the way back here is some ser, serious The, the proposed development would impact these parcels right here, for the most part. This is a baseball field, or a recreation field. And then these are the R-20 OSCs, I believe this is an R-20 OSC, I thought it was, I might be mistaken, but... Okay, so, these are the R-20 OSCs on, on the east side of Old Villarica Road, and I went to talk to some people down in some of these other developments back here, and I heard both from, they had no, you know, they, they didn't know about the development, or they're concerned that the development of senior cer, the senior, senior living there will bring down their, the prices of their homes. I've also heard from certain members of the community that the Marietta Housing Authority is, or Marietta, is using the Mari Housing Authority to push their low-income affordable housing out into Cobb County. So I asked for a map of where the current developments are in the county. I'm not sure if the, if we can get the cameras. But, how do I, can we do that? Okay, so if you, if you look at the circles on this map, I need one more person, Pam, come down here and be useful. We really have a great relationship, so. Anyway, if you look at this map, the circles right now, except for, the circle right where I'm pointing at, that's the proposed, that's where the first phase is going, right here off of Macklin on Old Villarica Road. The rest of the circles are current, or ongoing developments that Mari Housing Authority's doing here in Cobb County. So they range all the way from up here in Acworth, down along Seventy-Five, Forty-One, down into Marietta itself. So I think the housing authority's done a pretty good job of locating sites where they can put affordable housing in the county. So in fact, they're not, they're not pinpointing South Cobb by any measure as a place to put affordable housing. They're just, they're, they're doing a, they're doing their job as they agreed with the county for the last forty or fifty years. Okay? Thank you, Pam, appreciate your help. Thank you, Michael. Thank you. The last thing, the last couple of things I want to say is that, we don't want to be painting the Mari Housing Authority here as the, as the bad actors. The housing authorities, there's been back and forth about who did what to who, and the answer is, both sides are right. The housing authorities were in fact authorized by state legislation back in nineteen thirty-seven, but it was the county that brought them, brought, this county and the city that brought them into life. So we both have a hand in how things are done. And in nineteen thirty-seven, Mari Housing Atho, Mari House, Mari House Housing Authority was authorized basically to build within ten nautical miles of downtown Marietta. And so that came into the city, that included Cobb County, and not incorporated Cobb County. Back in around the nineteen seventies, when the county was asked if they wanted to get involved in the affordable housing issue, we deferred to let Mari Housing Authority assume that responsibility on behalf of the county. And one of the questions that I still have, have not had answered, is whether or not that, that relationship was formalized, or still an informal understanding. So there's a lot of response, there's a lot that Mari House Authority does in the county based on their past actions, because of how they did things, and currently where we are now. But the bottom line here is, is that they've been acting in good faith, except that now, in this case here, the extremity of the density that they're proposing has caused the problem. I think if they stayed with a hundred and forty-four houses, it probably would not be a big issue. And I get the part about the fact that they, that people in the community believe that they were not properly advertised about the development. Well, this is an issue not just regarding to the Mari House Authority, but we hear that issue here at the board all the time, that people come to the zoning hearings, or the planning committee saying, I didn't know about this, even though we put signs up there. So there's an issue here that we have to address somehow. But I think the number way to resolve this issue is that regardless of the development, or the source of the development, the number one person that should be contacted before anything is done in their district is the district commissioner. I think if we have, if we do that one simple act, that goes to the heart of solving any number of these problems, because then the district commissioner can use their mechanisms to inform their constituents about a proposed development in the area, based be it from the Mari Housing Authority, or for any other developer in the county. And we've had that issue last month, when somebody came to the board and they didn't talk, you know, to the commissioner first. So we need to, we need to do some things like Commissioner Cusman was talking about. We have some procedures that need to be addressed, and promptly, because they're causing us problems up here, when in fact, we're all trying to do the right thing, but we're not responding to the fact that this is no longer a small county, it's a county of seven or sixty thousand people, and we're increased, we're, we're having increasing issues that are connected to our population increase. So again, I just want to, I want to come down on the side here, the Mariation Authority, they, they did what they thought was best. Our ordinances allow them to do this kind of action without zoning. That's in our ordinances. So they weren't violating any law, yeah, they were in fact, you know, acting in the guidelines they were given. The, um, there were a number of issues that Commissioner Gamble has been bringing up here, and I've had a lot of fun doing my homework, glad she's had a lot of fun doing hers. And, but the bottom line here, is this really is, the practice of the board, is that we follow the district commissioner recommendations with something of this magnitude or this matter. That's been, that's been our professional courtesy from that matter, I've not, I've yet to see a single instance here, and I could be wrong, where if a commissioner, on a matter of this, of this, of this magnitude, has an opinion on that, I've yet to see the board overrule that commissioner on that issue.
He hasn't been here long enough.
Well, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying at the time that I've been here, okay? I can't speak, okay, all right, but, okay, I could be, I could be wrong, it's, it happened, this happens once every year, okay? And this can night be the night. The bottom I'm making here is, is that my heart tells me that this is an issue that, that we need to address, what's, what's the greater good here? What's the greater, what's the greater issue? Is it the affordable housing issue, or is it the fact that we have some legitimate issues by those who live in those neighborhoods, that are very nice houses? They are, they're very nice houses down there, I walked through those neighborhoods. I was very impressed with what's there, and I can understand why it is that you're so insistent that we follow the zoning ordinances here, to ensure that we preserve the nature and characteristic of your neighborhood. I understand that, I really do. But I'm equally torn by the fact that we have a growing affordable housing issue in this county. That I hope that none of us think that we're going to be exempt from that. Because as prices go up around here, we're finding gentrification becoming more and more of an issue, not just for those who think that they would be impacted by this economic issue, they find themselves being absorbed into it because they themselves can't afford the taxes, or all the other issues that go with maintaining a house in that neighborhood. So this affordable housing issue is something that the Mari Housing Authority's been looking at, I'm hearing from people in, in the, throughout the county, it's not just South Cobb, it's throughout the county. How do we deal with this? So, I'm not, I'm sort of torn between render under Caesar what's Caesar, and render to God what's God's. And the law, the law says, you know, has one, has one action, but I don't know how the law is going to respond to the fact that if we do not approve this development, then the problem will be even worse than it is right now. It goes to the issue of the homeless that we, that we heard at the city Marietta the other day, where there, there were residents who did not like the variances being proposed there, because of the issue of the homeless being outside that shelter. But if they didn't build a shelter, then the homeless would be outside the shelter, because there's no shelter. So what do we do about the affordable housing issue? And I think I'm just going to have to, you know, go with, with my, you know, with what I believe is perhaps not the most popular thing to do, but I think is what, in my heart of hearts, is why I was elected to make the hard calls. So that, unless anybody has any other discussions, I'm going to call a question. And the motion, the motion is to deny. If you vote yes, you vote to deny it, if you vote no, you vote to, uh...
Yeah, just a last in comment for the record. Yes, just, um, M H, yes, and I...
I'm scared, I'm scared.
He asked if there was a, I mean, usually...
I did, I, I...
Yes.
I said if there's any other questions, I was going to call a question, but you apparently...
Yes, there was just a comment that...
Go ahead, sure.
Yes, again, I have, I have, while there's a lot has been moderated, this has been unfortunately a more contentious process. But at the end of the day, I just want to let Marietta Housing Authority know again that their support to address affordable housing for seniors, and for the county, and that I am supportive, and that this application is specific to this particular location, and to the density that's being requested, in light of the character of the area.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll call a question. And it passes four to one, with the commissioner, the chairman in opposition. And with that, I believe that's the last regular agenda item. Then we have appointments? All right, no, we're, okay, so, um, we have, I'm going to announce, I have to, I'm going to announce the reappointment of Sam Heaton and Carl Demari to the Net Neighborhood Safety Commission. And with that, we have a, Commissioner Gamble, I believe you, you have a motion to, to appoint someone to the board, a reappointment to the board?
Ah, yes, um, I'd like to approve the reappointment of John Pape to the Recreation Board.
Second, in discussion, call a question, passes five to zero. All right, um, I think that's all the appointments, right? So I'll start with Commissioner Ott. Is the scout still here? Is the boy scout still here?
Richard.
Do we have any boy scouts in the audience tonight? Come on up, young man, this is your night to excel. Get up, come on up.
We know you're here for a merit badge, which one? Is it communication or citizenship in the community? Because, well, good, because I'm a former scoutmaster, and I know you have to ask a question, I'm an elected official. So you get to come up here and ask a question of anybody.
Don't ask about the Mari Housing Authority, okay? Don't ask about the Mary Housing Authority, okay? What's your name, young man?
My name is Ben Hutchins and I live off of, uh, Mayberry Road.
Okay, and what's your, what's your troop number?
Uh, we're, I'm at 955. We were at Johnson Ferry Baptist Church, but we moved.
All right, great, okay, so what's your question?
Um, well, I wasn't really prepared for this, but, um, I was also kind of wondering about the land use by the Josh Johnson Ferry and Shalford Road.
Okay.
Um, there's a lot, there's a lot of acres.
I was asking the same question, and I'll give that to Commissioner Otte.
That would go to your commissioner. So the Josh study, for those who don't know, it stands for Johnson Ferry Shalford Road. And it's, um, a community-driven master plan, okay? And so the land uses are what the community set over a series of meetings for the year of what they wanted to see. So some of them, um, are commercial, some of them are residential. But in general, the land uses are gonna pretty much stay the way they are. And if you wanna see exactly what they are, you can go to my webpage and like all the stuff about Josh is on there.
Thanks.
So...
Any other questions?
Are you kidding? He's like, can't wait to get down.
All right, thanks for coming tonight, appreciate it. Good luck out there. How close you to your eagle?
Um, I'm at one to go right now.
Okay, all right.
So that's ranked one to four.
All right.
It's very impressive that someone of your age has concern about land use. You're, you're gonna go far.
All right, I'll start with Commissioner Otte on the announcements.
Okay, so unfortunately, the person that I wanted here to see this is homesick. So, uh, John, um, sorry you're not feeling well. But, um, District Two resident John Galouli, senior editor at the MDJ, passed along this exciting moment for his family when his 99-year-old grandfather, a Purple Heart WWII veteran, recently flew to Annapolis to watch the Navy Air Force game. I was rooting for Air Force, but... On the jumbo screen during the game, the announcer said, "Fans, let's give a..." Why don't we play the video instead of me saying it?
Fans, let's give a warm welcome to Captain Jack Galouli, United States Naval Academy class of 1945, who is the oldest living former Navy football player.
No, it's his...
During his naval career, he commanded two carriers and was the base commander when Navy took over the Orlando Air Base and converted it into the Orlando Naval Training Center. He is joined today by his son Lon Galouli, his granddaughter Bethany Galouli, and friend Sam Delk. Ladies and gentlemen, Jack Galouli.
So, um, kind of interestingly, when he was asked about how football has changed between when he played in the 1940s and now, Captain Jack observed, "The equipment is considerably improved." So we wanna thank you for your service, Captain Jack Galouli. And I know that John is very proud. So, all right, moving on to the scouts, so pay attention. Scout troops are invited to the Coop House, which is the Cobb Overdose Prevention Effort, from 9:00 a.m. in the morning till 10:30 p.m. this Saturday, October 26th, at the Zone, which is at 32 Fairground Street, um, in Marietta in honor of Red Ribbon Week. This is a joint effort with, uh, my office, the, uh, County District Attorney, the Solicitor General, the County Sheriff's Office, and the Davis Drexton Foundation to provide this educational opportunity. The mobile classroom, as a lot of you know, is designed to help educate parents and guardians aged 21 and over about warning signs of drug addiction and how to keep teens away from illegal drugs. The house is designed to mirror a teenager's bedroom, bathroom, and closet with more than 50 items or clues on display for the parents to see that they need to have a discussion. Parents or guardians go through the Coop House while the youth under the age of 21 will get an age-appropriate presentation. This is an opportunity to receive awareness about this rising epidemic. Red Ribbon Week is an alcohol, tobacco, and other drug and violence prevention awareness campaign observed annually in October in the United States. It began as a tribute to fallen DEA Special Agent Enrique Camarena in 1985 and is celebrated annually, um, October 23rd through the 31st. If you or your troupe is interested, um, to reserve a spot, reach out to my assistant, Kim, um, at kim-swanson@cobbcounty.org. And my last announcement, um, no, I am just reading what my assistant put here. Need an excuse to dress up your pet? Hoots and howls benefiting Rock for Rescues is back on September, or Sunday, October 27th at 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Live at the Battery Atlanta, which is at 825 Battery Adam Avenue, Suite 600. Enjoy live music by the Lance Chat Last Chance Riders, drink specials, access to second level of PBR Atlanta, and sports and social Atlanta, and costume contests, all for a great cause. A hundred percent of the ticket sales are donated back to Rock for Rescues and it's referred to as barks, brews, and booze for hoots and howls. And that's all I have.
I'm grateful. Commissioner Burrow.
Okay, on October 25th and the 31st, there are Census Job Info Sessions. The Census Bureau officials will share information on the 2020 Census Job Opportunities and answer questions about applying during job opportunity sessions at Mountain View Regional Library Friday, October 25th and Thursday, October 31st. All sessions are 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and you can go to 2020census.gov/jobs for more information. Okay, this Saturday, we have increased to two locations for Medication Disposal Day. It's actually National Drug Takeback Day, um, all over the country. But this Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Police Precinct One on Cobb Parkway in Kennesaw and at the Freeman Pool Center at 4025 South Hurt Road in Smyrna, we will be taking back expired medication and getting it out of your medicine cabinet and not flushing it down the toilet and taking it and properly disposing of it. So, um, you have two locations to go to this time. And also on October 30th, a week from tomorrow, the Board of Commissioners are honoring our Korean War veterans with a ceremony to give them a certificate for their service and a peace medal, that they'll be receiving. We have over 200 signed up. It's at the Cobb Civic Center at 2:00 p.m., October 30th. You're all invited to come. And if you know of any World, any, oh, WWII, any Korean War veterans, yeah, um, there are forms in the back for them to sign up and get their peace medal and certificate. Uh, this is in conjunction with the State Veterans Affairs Office. Commissioner Roby will be there and the Consulate General of Korea. Okay, what's the next one? Oh, Kennesaw Mountain, there's a new entrance fee for your vehicle beginning November 13th, a $5 daily fee and a $40 annual pass. So for more information, you can go to recreation.gov.
And we, and the county had nothing to do with those fees. I just want that to be known. The county had nothing to do with those fees.
No, that's federal, federal part. Um, this, you don't have a picture for this. But today I was, um, I had the opportunity to participate in a ribbon cutting in a new Jimmy Nick's restaurant in Sandy Plains Marketplace. It's the old Mountain View School and it's the first business to open in the new shopping center. Um, we had a ribbon cutting today. They're open for business and the food is delicious. They also contributed over $3,000 to the Skip Wells Foundation, um, as the charity for their, um, VIP opening this weekend. And, um, it was just a great event, so thank you. And you're a new pickleball.
Commissioner, Commissioner Gamble.
Happy Halloween. And thank you, Kelly, for the talk.
Oh, we'll talk about the pumpkins in just a minute.
Can we take them home? In just a minute.
There's a twist to this. Um, first, I would like to, um, Imagine a Day Without the Wastewater Treatment, that we have here in Cobb County. Um, our water department has done a video that I would like to show. But on October 23rd, um, it's the Fifth Annual Imagine a Day Without Water. This is a nationwide day of action, encourages citizens to think about what would happen if they couldn't turn on the tap and get clean drinking water or if they flushed the toilet and the wastewater didn't go anywhere. What horrors would await if Cobb County wastewater treatment facilities were overtaken by the horror movie villains intent on destruction and mayhem? Thankfully, through the diligent and hard-working employees of our wastewater treatment facility, Imagine a Day Without, Without Wastewater Treatment will remain a nightmare and not a reality. If we can play the video, please.
Can you imagine a day without wastewater treatment? Imagine the very infrastructure that cleans the water after you're done using it, gone. Imagine what horrors would fit with Cobb County homes without wastewater treatment. Can you imagine taking a shower and dirty water slowly clogging up your drain? Can you imagine brushing your teeth and not seeing your used toothpaste go down the drain? Can you imagine trying to clean your dirty dishes in water full of yesterday's food scraps? And could you imagine a toilet that could not be flushed? Luckily, you don't have to imagine a day without wastewater treatment. It's thanks to the hard work of Cobb County Water Systems employees that these horrors are banished. How do they do it? By investigating and repairing issues in Cobb County water systems, thousands of miles of pipes from homes, businesses, and schools. By working days and nights tirelessly, monitoring the technology that powers wastewater treatment plants. And by protecting our water resources by testing the wastewater at every stage of the cleaning process.
Hey, you got my hat off.
With these horrors vanquished and the help of Cobb County Water System workers, we can rest assured knowing that these horrors won't keep us up at night. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, our employees are safeguarding our water resources so we never have to imagine a day without wastewater treatment.
That was nice. That was great. That was awesome. Yes, so thank you to our water system for all you do for us on a daily basis. This weekend is our Great Pumpkin Day. It's gonna be, um, at Still Family Farm from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And as you can see out front, we brought the Great Pumpkin Day here to the Board of Commissioners' room. Specialty pumpkins, that's right. Um, admission to this event is $15 per person and children four and younger are free. There will also be a $2 discount with a military ID. Or if you bring a donation, um, of a new fleece, children's blanket, disinfectant wipes, or a big box of tissue to benefit Safe Path, uh, you will also get $2 off your admission. There will be concession stands open for snacks and drinks, touch a fire truck, and several other, um, activities for you to participate. And our Cobb County Animal Control will also have our adoption ban there for people to look at possible forever homes for their pets. Um, so as you know, we have pumpkins in the front of the room, um, to honor each one of the commissioners. Um, but I would like to encourage you to make a donation to Safe Path, um, on behalf of the pumpkin. Or if you are willing, we will put your pumpkin up for an online, um, open bid process and the highest bidder, um, as of 4:30 on Thursday will get your pumpkin. So I will leave it up to you. Um, if you can just let me know if you would like your pumpkin. Actually, actually, we have, um, y- yeah, you can either, you can, yeah, okay. Safe Path would appreciate that. But we have, um, ta- uh, talent in our staff that many of you might not have known about. Judith Bowers is actually, um, who painted the pumpkins for us. So Judith, I know you're not here, but thank you very much for loaning us your artistic, um, skills. And then also, um, Ryan Williams, Aqual Leau, and Lila Washington helped decorate the room for tonight. So again, thank you, staff, for helping make Gamble's Great Pumpkin Day, um, start off to a success.
Good idea, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for my pumpkin. It, it did keep me company during today's hearing, which Cupid needed all the love she can get. So I kept it up here with me this evening. Number of comments, please refer to the newsletter. The only one I'll refer to is that we have Cobb 101 starting again. And we'd like to thank staff for your diligence in making this our third one to date and that applications will be due December 2nd. And that's that. Oh, and everybody have a happy Halloween, please, and safe.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cupid. Um, I have several comments. The, um, another good news tonight, the Georgia Recreation Park Association named Cobb County as the 2019 Agency of the Year for Highest Population Category of 150,000 people or more. So congratulations to our Parks and Rec Department. As you know, Keith Mazan, uh, Mazan, Mazankey runs our, our, uh, Health Wellness Center downstairs. And, uh, he was awarded by the American Heart Association the Silver Level Status for Workplace Health for the county's wellness program. So another great employee to, to, makes us look great. And not done, kudos to the Cobb County Library Book Sale. $48,510 was raised that weekend, $48,010.
What did everybody else buy? Commissioner Cupid paid for that, right?
Unfortunately, not this year. Kid soccer took precedence, yeah, so I know.
I, 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 I picked up your load, I can assure you.
I'm saddened, but I will be there in March. Yes, I know, the kids are books, I know.
They're that age, that's right. Uh, Su- Sunday is, believe it or not, new pickleball courts at Shaw Park off Canton Highway in Commissioner Burrow's district. And two new, two tennis courts, uh, are being converted into six pickleball courts. And ladies and gentlemen, uh, I can assure you that this is, uh, in response to a large demand by a growing population of seniors that are very active, uh, which is why pickleball has become so important in the county. So I look forward to being there at that ceremony on Sunday. And then finally, I'm not sure why I got this announcement. This is, this is Commissioner Burrow's category, but... Well, okay, but I wanna thank everyone, uh, at the Cobb County Animal Services Staff for a decre- incredible job, uh, in cleaning up the facility after a, uh, an outbreak. There were some, could have been some potentially serious illness to animals. There were two options. One of them was to euthanize over 60 animals or to clean the facility. And option A was not, was not an option at all. Uh, we really care about our pets here in Cobb County. And, uh, I think nothing, we, we can, we have no better tribute to the staff and the volunteers who jumped right in, uh, to clean out the facility, bring it back to the standard that we expect of it. So with that, I'm getting a note here and, um...
They have a special one, $20 adoption fees.
At the, at the Animal Services?
That's all.
So if you visit the Animal Services this weekend, uh, special this weekend, $20 off. And if you can't afford the $20, Commissioner Burrow will gladly pick it up for you. Just kidding. With that, let's have a happy and safe Halloween. And with that, we're adjourned.